All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever-
Thank you. So for tonight's agenda, we get a motion for tonight's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda with-
There's additions.
Yeah, no, I know. I was about to say that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I move to approve the agenda with the addition of the amendments to the agenda, including the skating in the park personal and professional service agreements, which will end up being added six, yep, sixty to the agenda with the amendments as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved with the amendments. So next, we have one person signed up for a public comment. If they could want to step forward. Yeah. Yes, please come up here, introduce yourself and just where you live.
Hi, I'm Sarah Smith.
Yeah, sorry.
This is my husband Kevin. We live in Lyons and we're in the process of buying new films. Anything else?
Was there anything else that you wanted to share or is that-
Just that we're hoping to get approval for the transfer of ownership and greater privilege on the OLCC.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have some very special visitors tonight. I would like to introduce the 2023 Corn Festival Rock Fairy Princesses and invite them forward at this time.
Going to say something first.
Oh, you're going to say something first? Okay.
You girls could go ahead and stand. Go ahead and stand.
Want to stand up here? They can, that way.
Yeah. We've got one more that might show up. My name's Deanna Cox and I kind of started all of this in 2020. Corn Fest was canceled. So I came up with a way people could still have fun and that was having a big rock, which is this rock, painted. And I took it out in the community and hid it in 2020. And that was the start of it all. I handed out some gift cards and some corn trophies that I had found. And people were texting me saying, do it again next year, do it again next year. So in 2021, I did the same thing, went out in the community, hid this rock, but that year, everybody wanted to keep this rock. And I said, no, this is like, we can't keep that. So I reached out to the rock communities. There's Facebook rock communities that paints rocks. And last year I had 200 rocks donated, beautiful painted rocks donated. And I thought, oh, I can't hide all of these by myself. I'm going to have to have help. So I had the first two little girls that found the rock, the very first year was Paisley Thompson and Ava Witt be my Rock Fairy Princesses last year. That's how I picked them. And they helped me hide all 200 rocks last year. Well, after the 200 rocks were hid, people were messaging me, is there any more? This was like on Wednesday. Is there any more rocks? I said, no. So this year I've got over 400 rocks donated. That's going to be hid in the community. So I needed more help. So these little girls, I'd like to introduce Sky Brown, step forward. She's the daughter of Kayla and Brianna Brown. Amelia Parsons, go ahead, step forward, honey. The daughter of Ashley and Jason Parsons. And Lucy Jones, the daughter of Dalton Jones and Jessica. And we have one more little girl that's coming. Her name's Ava Pierce. And these little girls have either been involved in the community or found the rock last year. And that's how I picked these little girls. And they are going to help us hide all 400 rocks out in the community this year. And they want to come around and give everybody a sample of the rocks and a little picture. Oh, sure. All right, sure.
So we
That's fine.
Good citizen award, we send each of you from the Simyam Club, so.
Stand up. Here you go.
It means a lot.
That's right. And this is your 2023 Almsville Corn Fest Rock Fairy Princesses for this year.
Oh, cool. I love it. So cool.
Yeah, that picture. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
This here, go over here.
Thank you. Got a red one? Oh my gosh, it's an Eminem.
That's so cool.
So Deanna, I have a question. When the community members find these rocks, do they turn them back into you?
No, those rocks-
They get to keep them?
They get to keep them or rehide them. And then this rock right here, the famous Corn Fest rock, it's, this is the only rock that has my name, or not my name, but my phone number on it. That it says, you won. If found, please call or text my phone number. And they call, usually text me and I always meet them down there in front of City Hall. It's just a safe place. Take their picture, give them their medals or their awards and off they go. And then what I've been doing is putting all of those names of the people that found this rock throughout the week in a hat. And then the end of the week, I draw or have somebody draw and the big prize is a cornhole game. Kind of keep with the theme.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Very nice. Thank you, Deanna, for everything that you're doing and everyone else and the parents that are involved.
Thank you, princesses.
All right, moving on. So we are moving on to agenda item. The consent agenda, sorry. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item number four, public hearing. The council will now open the public hearing on amending chapter six of the Almsville Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Almsville Parks Master Plan. The time is 7:11 PM. We'll invite Ron Harding to speak on it.
Actually, for this public hearing, we have Dave Kimmy, our consultant that's been working on this project. And he is able to join us via Zoom. So I'm going to turn this over to Dave to give the report.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I hope you can hear me. I'm back in New Hampshire and there's a pretty good thunderstorm going on outside. So I'm hearing pretty heavy rain in my background.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much. The city of Almsville received a grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to prepare an amendment to the Almsville Parks Master Plan, which I worked on with the city back in 2016. The city retained me and Brian Banson, a landscape architect out of Portland, to prepare amendments to the Parks Master Plan for the new 22.57 acre East Side Community Park. And I worked with a small committee comprised of Kirstie Pesudo, Delisseni, Amy Evans, and a couple of other members of the Planning Commission to develop several concept plans for the East Side Community Park. And then to reach out to the community, we, as many of you participated in the open houses, we held two open houses at the community center. And then Councilmember Senni and Kirstie and I were able to go out to Cascade Middle School and met with around 350 to 400 of the middle school students. And then we went to Almsville Elementary School and met with, I think, four or five classes of elementary age students to present the different design concepts for the master plan and ask the kids at all of those age groups what they would like to see in a new community park facility. And they were pretty explicit and pretty clear on their suggestions and ideas. And fortunately, they had some things which we had not thought about. And so many of their ideas are incorporated in the design for the East Side Community Park. At the conclusion of the open houses and the community meetings of the advisory committee, we developed a final master plan document with a narrative about the East Side Community Park and with final concept design drawings, which are included in your, in your packet. After the last open house, we prepared those documents and then the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 15th, where they reviewed the plan and then recommended unanimously to the city council that you take a couple of actions. One is to adopt amendments to the Parks Master Plan and formally accept that, which now includes a section Appendix A7 on the East Side Community Park. They also recommended that the council proceed with an amendment to the Almsville Comprehensive Plan and to amend the urban growth boundary and annex the property, the park property into the city of Almsville. That will give the city basically planning as well as building permit control over the issuance of permits and allows the city to extend utilities, water and sewer and storm drainage into the park site as you're able to get funding to make the improvements. So you have in your packet a couple of things. One is you've got Ordinance 716, which is the ordinance that updates and adopts the amendments to the Almsville Parks Master Plan and also adopts the proposed East Side Community Park Park Plan. It includes some narrative. It also include finding the fact to demonstrate compliance with statewide planning goals and with the city's comprehensive plan document. And I will pause there and ask if any of the council members has any comments or questions of me. And Counselor Senni, I would encourage you to step in since you were very involved through this whole process.
I will just say that it was a lot of fun to go to the schools and to hear the kids' comments and input. I honestly felt like we got better input from them than we did the adults at the open houses. So we listened very carefully to them and took lots of notes, thanks to Kirstie. And I think we have a very viable plan and I hope that it's successful and useful for many years.
If there are no other immediate questions for me, this is a legislative hearing, which means the city council-
I think we've got one, one question.
Yep. Oh, okay.
Yeah. It isn't a question. It's just, I was awed by the amount of detail and all of the work that went into this plan. And thank you for all the hard work that this committee has done.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I do thank you. I do want to thank you for going out to the schools. The kids and their families are the ones going to be, like, adults are going to be using it too, but on a regular basis, you know, it's usually, like, I remember the parks growing up as a kid where I lived and, you know, I think that was, that was a good move. So I appreciate that. All right, so where are we at here? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, what I was going to say is this is a legislative amendment to the comprehensive plan to adopt the amendments to the, the overall master parks plan. So you're really calling for any public testimony in favor, any public testimony against, and then asking counselors if they have questions before proceeding to close the hearing and decide whether you want to move forward or not.
Um, we don't have anybody in the audience tonight. Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting besides? Okay. So there is no public comment. Does staff have any additional questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one, one attendee. Looks like Cameron, do you have anything to add?
Okay.
They may be for a different action, but I'd just say that in addition to the work that we did do, we also did circulate surveys throughout the city. And I think overall, the response from the open houses and the interactions with the kids and coupled with the surveys was very positive. So, and really good feedback.
All right, so with that, I will now close the public hearing at 7:19 PM and move on to council deliberations, which I think we just did. So we just need a motion for Orderance 716.
I don't feel like I can make it since I was on the committee, guys, so one of you will get to.
You can.
Yeah, you can.
I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 716 and ordinance amending chapter seven, or excuse me, chapter six. Have the Almsville Comprehensive Plan and Adopting the Almsville Parks Master Plan as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So may I have a motion on the second reading and adoption?
I move to approve the second reading by title only and adopt Ordinance 716 and ordinance amending chapter six of the Almsville Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Almsville Parks Master Plan as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you for all your work and working with the city and the staff. I really appreciate that. That, I'm looking forward to all of this.
So I actually think there's one more motion.
There is.
Presented.
Our urban growth boundary.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Oh, okay.
I move to direct the city administrator to initiate an amendment to the Almsville Comprehensive Plan to expand the city's urban growth boundary and to annex the East Side Community Park Site.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, are you ready? I didn't see that one in my notes. Wrong.
So thank you very much to the council, to the committee and the citizens.
Thank you, Dave.
And I'd just like to thank Dave for all his hard work. Dave was the consultant on our original Park Master Plan and he does a fantastic job putting this together. And I'll be honest with you. He and Kirstie together just went off and took this load, this project away from me. And I think it actually turned out better without my involvement. He did a better job and, and, and I didn't feel the pressure of it. So thank you, Dave. Thank you, Kirstie, for all your work.
No problem. And I would echo Ron's comments about Kirstie's emphasis work on the project and really grabbing hold of it and taking it and moving forward.
Thank you. And I would just like to say Brian did an awesome job with our drawings too. He did a great job working with us on those.
All right. So moving on, the council will now open the public hearing on updating Ordinance 460 relating to communication infrastructure. The time is 7:22. We'll invite Ron Harding to present the staff report.
Hey, council, good evening. The staff report's in your packet, but basically we had a request to renew a communication franchise, which is actually the next public hearing that we're about to hear. And in that process, we looked at our master communication ordinance and there were some updates that needed to be really done with that ordinance because there had been some changes in the laws. And also there were a few things in some of our pre-existing ordinances that we wanted to update. We felt we were lagging a little bit behind, things like changing the language for insurance requirements to keep up with any changes in state requirements. And so we didn't do a heavy edit on the, the amendment for 460. But we did amend those things that are relevant in 460. And if you have any specific questions, I believe you've got in your packet a track changes. So you could see they were pretty, pretty light amendments and most of them really were related to some FCC changes and then some were just readability changes. Other than, other than that, if there's any specific section that you have questions on, I'm happy to try to address that.
718, right?
717.
It's, it's 717, but it's an ordinance that amends 460. And one of the reasons why we're taking the action to amend is 460 is embedded into a lot of contracts. And so we need to preserve that ordinance number, but you amend it with a new ordinance. Typically, I like to rewrite the ordinances, but there's some that are just embedded through historical documents.
We're on 4B, if that helps you any.
I was looking at the second one with was B.
I know this one didn't get tabbed here.
Yeah, we did separate cable franchises, telecommunications franchises and cable franchises don't necessarily follow the same FCC rules. And so our franchise attorney wanted to separate those and, and make sure that they were distinct. So we did call some of that language out. Other than that, I think the document is-
I thought it was far more readable with these changes than we've dealt with before.
Yep, they're, they're pretty minimum, I think, but necessary. And I don't know if there's any public that wants to address this, but I'll step away.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
In that there is no public comment, I will now close the hearing on this at 7:26 PM. Do we have any further council questions or deliberations? We just need a motion on Ordinance 717.
Move to approve Ordinance 717 and ordinance updating Ordinance 460 relating to communications infrastructure as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Right. Need to do a second reading?
So.
Yes.
I move to approve Ordinance 717 and ordinance updating Ordinance 760 relating to communication infrastructure on its second reading and adoption.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, the council will now open the public hearing on an ordinance granting a franchise to, for telephone and other telecommunications purposes to Ziply, is that right?
Ziply.
Ziply Fiber Northwest LLC. The time is 7:27 PM. Ron, go ahead with this report.
Yes, and okay, ordinance. So Ziply Fiber is, Northwest LLC is the company that had requested to renew their franchise agreement that was previously owned, I believe, by Frontier Communications. And we went through you. I think you have just a clean version. We went back and forth. There was quite a few language changes, but I think most of the changes were really trying to follow the, the new FCC regulations. We also wanted to make sure that we did in this document distinguish that these were telecommunications franchises that we were approving, not a cable franchise. We also, one of the things that we did that was kind of important was some language related to disturbing private property. We wanted to make sure that, you know, if somebody was going to work, our franchise really covers working in the right of way, but we wanted to extend that a little bit, that if they're disturbing private property, that they really need to leave that as they found it, return it to its condition. And then the insurance requirements, we memorialize that those are set by the master communication franchise or by state law. So if state law require, changes the tort limits, then the contract limits would automatically follow that. And then finally, the other major change was really related to violations. We just felt for big corporations that if they're, if they're going to violate the franchise agreement, there has to be a substantial penalty for that. And I think before our penalty was like $100 to $500. And we really needed to have those penalties increased a little bit so that we had, you know, some mechanism to make sure that our franchise holders are keeping to that. And so we increased that to $1,000 to $5,000. We, we did provide this to Ziply. They worked closely. Their representative worked closely with our franchise attorney and drafting this language. We went back and forth and they, and, and they were accepted of it prior to bringing it to council. And I have to answer any other questions if you would have them.
I don't have any questions, do you guys have any? Okay. Being that there is nobody here for public comment online. If there's no public comment online, then we will close this part of the public hearing at 7:30. And we need a motion.
Move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 718 and ordinance granting a franchise for a telephone and other telecommunications purposes to Ziply Fiber Northwest LLC by the city of Almsville by title only.
All those, oh, wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve it, Ordinance 718 and ordinance granting a franchise for telephone and other telecommunications purposes to Ziply Fiber Northwest LLC by the city of Almsville for a second reading and adoption as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Right, so. We can, do we have anything else?
Old business.
No, I meant like, moving on to old business, I will now move on to the agenda item. No, I meant like, okay, moving on to old business. Um, I will now move on to the agenda item. A motion, oh, a motion to correction, but uh I'm saying this wrong. Budget correction?
Yeah, a budget correction motion. And let me explain this for uh just a quick second. So at the last meeting, we adopted our budget. And just before we took that action, uh councillor Cox said to me, did you check all the numbers? And confidently, I looked at him and said, yes, we did. And there was one minor uh number that was not transcribed correctly, and that was the number embedded in the motion. So the resolution and the budget resolution and the budget numbers were all double-checked, and they were correct. The motion number was incorrect. It's a minor issue. We don't have to do a big to do about it, but we just want to get counsel to restate the motion with the correct number that was actually in the resolution, just so we have a clean record. So we don't have to do a big public hearing. We just want to get on the record a new motion that actually states those reconciled numbers with the um uh budget resolution.
I'll be happy to amend my motion. I move to amend the motion we passed on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three by striking the number eighteen million three hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine and inserting the number twenty-one thousand.
No, million, twenty-one million.
The zeros threw me. Twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Just lost a lot of money.
I almost, almost lost a lot of money.
That's a lot of money out of budget.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Not used to seeing all zeros in the thousand section.
Eight eighteen million was last year's budget, and we grabbed the motion, moved it over, and you deal with so many numbers. You know, we we checked and rechecked, and ten people had eyes on it, but.
Cut and paste is not like your friend.
Moving on to agenda, um, item number six, new business. Um, so we have six A of resolution nine dash twenty-three establishing updated city service fees and public record information request policy.
Yeah, and and this really coincides with the master fee uh schedule and and the updated uh franchise, communication franchise agreement for Ziply. And so there's some, there's some very specific limitations in charges that we can charge a franchise. And in twenty nineteen, the FCC actually further uh confined or defined how those charges could be applied. And so all we're really doing here with the master uh fee schedule is updating that section related to telecommunication franchise fees to coincide with the updated master fee or the updated master communications franchise agreement, so.
Is there a, are there any questions from? Is there a motion for resolution nine dash twenty-three?
I move to approve resolution number nine twenty-three as presented by staff.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six B, resolution ten dash twenty-three, authorizing a loan from the Special Public Works Fund of the Oregon Business Development Department for construction of the public workshop.
Yes, and I I just want to say how how uh much work we've done on this project. This is the kind of final action other than uh ribbon cutting, I think, at at this new building that we'll have to take to complete this particular project. Um, and as council knows, uh, we had been working hard for several years to be able to build this new facility. We'd been saving money, but as we saved money, the cost of construction continued to rise. We finally went out, were able to acquire a grant uh from the state uh legislature, I think in the twenty-one, twenty-two session. Uh, and then we went out to bed and found out, well, we still didn't have enough money because construction costs continue to rise. And so uh uh our final solution was then to take out a loan for the remaining balance, and council authorized us to apply for that. These are the contracts authorizing us to enact that loan. Uh, and the uh resolution is in front of you. This required for us to be able to um uh execute that loan, but then also authorizing the mayor uh to sign the loan documents and contracts, which are also in your packet. It's a fairly standard um um, you know, government finance contract. Uh, we've set the price at seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We 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 really trimmed. Originally, we thought we'd need eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, and we've tried to cut that back as to the bare minimum. Um, uh, just because we really don't want to take on any more debt. We're really trying not to do that in light of some of the big sewer projects that we're working on. So we really cut that back. We think it's gonna do fine. We were able to get some value value engineering off of the original contract bidding, brought that number down a little. So um I think we're, I think we're gonna be sitting okay. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from council? Uh, is there a motion for resolution for the resolution?
To approve resolution number ten twenty-three, resolution authorizing a loan from the Special Public Works Fund of the Oregon Business Development Department for the construction of a public workshop building as presented by staff.
And then could you, would you amend that motion to also say authorize the mayor to execute the loan documents?
Um, and uh in addition, I would like to uh amend my motion by uh authorizing a mayor and help us say how to uh execute the loan documents.
Second. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on um to agenda item six C, an amendment to the Public Workshop Engineering Service Contract.
Yeah, so uh the uh council executed a contract uh for us to put together the bid documents and preliminary engineering specs to be able to go out uh and um bid the project out uh to contractors through the city's uh engineering services from West Tech Engineering. There's uh some money left in that contract, some money that we haven't expended. Uh, but we also would like to add some more money to that contract for construction management services. Um, we'd have to spend the money whether it's under contract or not. It's just cleaner to have it under contract because the um the uh building itself is a engineer-built contract, which means we don't design all of the engineering specs. Uh, the the building comes in a kit. And so we need to have our professional engineers at certain stages uh go off and sign off on some of the um engineering that's being presented. Uh, just covers the city. Uh, and then we're gonna wanna have, just to make sure the project uh flows well, we're gonna wanna have regular construction meetings where we look at schedule against progress uh and any issues that arise on site at that moment. We wanna have uh somebody that can jump in on our behalf. So uh we're asking to um uh change the contract to a not to exceed amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and that should provide us that engineering service uh to get the project done. Happy to answer any questions.
I will just say, having dealt with these projects before, it's worth every dime you pay them to do that.
And the contractor that we're using, this, they've done a lot of these buildings. Uh, they may even have done this building. Uh, so they, you know, they they kind of know what they're doing, but at the same time, you don't want to be in the middle of the project and then have something come up and not be able to address it, so.
This is in addition to the bid to build the film.
No, it's to the engineering contract.
Yeah, originally, the engineering contract, I think, was uh for seventy-two thousand. And all we're doing is amending that to be a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So it's a uh twenty-eight, it's about a sixty thousand dollar difference in not to exceed. We don't think we'll use all that, but we want to make sure that we have that available.
Are there any more questions? I don't have any question. We just need a motion if there's no more questions.
Move to amend uh the Public Workshop Engineering Services Contract um as presented by staff.
But the not to exceed.
Oh, yeah, I better. Oh, my apologies. I better just say that. Yeah, I'm amend my motion to say uh I moved to amend the public works building engineer services contract proposal from not to exceed the amount of seventy-two thousand, not to exceed the amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars as a presented by staff.
Second, second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Are we on six D now? Yeah, okay. So now move on to agenda item six D, an amendment to the DAS coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund agreement.
And I alluded to this. I think I told council this was coming before you. Uh, there has been uh there has been amendment to the DAS coronavirus fiscal recovery agreement. These were federal uh changes, and I I think the significant change, and maybe Kirsty's been kind of managing this. She can jump in if I misspeak here, but uh I think they're kind of getting, they're alluding to that it, we're not gonna have to go through a uh single uh project audit for these funds. And I think it's just because perhaps they don't have the capacity to do that. There were a few language changes. We don't know that any of these things, other than the way we report uh is is affected through the contract, but we wanted to bring this forward to uh council to get the approval to sign off. And it's like I said, with coronavirus and with ARPA funds and with uh, you know, all of these extra funding mechanisms that came uh through the last few years, it's they give you money and then they develop rules after you're in the process of administering that money. And so it's kind of a moving target, and it, you know, everybody's different. Uh, you may be reporting ARPA funds through one agency, and their reporting requirements are one thing, and another agency, their reporting requirements might be something different. So they they've been a little difficult to keep track of, but we we think, we think we're 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 doing that correctly. We're following their lead, and we're really uh trying to use the guidance of our case managers uh to make sure that we're administering these correctly, so.
I don't have any questions. Nobody else. We just need a motion.
I'll move to approve adopting the amendment to the Department of Administrative Services Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement expenditure category six point one revenue replacement.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, if council can bear with me one second, I wonder, I think we might have skipped.
You're talking about the O L C C?
I don't see it in.
That was the one we just did, wasn't it?
The O L C C one was in the consent agenda.
Oh.
Yeah, we're okay on that. I wasn't sure. That's the only thing that I've known that was passed, so.
Oh, oh, okay. No, there was a, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything here.
Um, we should be moving on to the skating in the park from what I've seen here.
Resolution. There, I think, oh, amendment to the public works. Amendment to D, the DAS coronavirus.
Nelson, I also don't see the amendment.
There wasn't one, because it's just a letter from them.
There, did did we do that at the last council meeting? Was there an update to the um West Tech Engineering Contract to change language to align with the new ARPA rules?
Yes.
That was at the last one? Okay, sorry. I apologize.
Make sure and not miss something.
Busy couple of weeks, so.
Our our agenda packets have been huge the last two meetings, so, okay, I just want to make sure. So now we are on to the skating in the park first personal professional service contract. Okay, so um I'm gonna give you a verbal uh staff report because this was just added. Uh, and I'll give you some background. So one of the things that we've tried to do each year the last few years was to extend the corn festival celebration. And one of our ideas to be able to uh extend different events is to contract for services for those events out because internally, our compa- our capacity beyond the corn festivals fairly constrained. And so for the last several years, the week before Corn Festival, we've been having a uh skate competition, and it was hosted by a company called Cakes. Um, uh, and they they sell sports. I believe they sell sports apparel. Uh, and they're really into that culture and industry. And they did really well. They didn't have the capacity to be able to host that event for us this year. And uh so we went out, we looked for other ideas, and we found a company called um Traveling Wheels, which is a roller skating, inline skating company. And um they're willing to host an event for three hours, and it's basically a family skate. Nobody will pay. It's all free. Uh, it'll be in uh Mill Creek Park. And uh they can accommodate, I think, two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty people, I believe, at a time. And they're, they staff it. They're doing everything for us. They're they're, you know, they're gonna try to welcome anybody that wants to participate, and they'll play music. They'll have a DJ. Um, and it's open to the entire family. So little kids, there there'll be accommodation for small kids and 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 larger kids as well. And so we would propose executing this contract. It's the same exact contract that we executed with cakes. We just changed the names uh and the location uh and the times, those types of things. And um the event will then happen on a Thursday, so we'll have a Thursday, Friday, Saturday event for Corn Festival, which was really all always our vision, but um, the skate competition wanted to be kind of on a weekend day, and there was really no other weekend day to fit it in other than the week before. So this actually fits a little bit more into that two or three day process of our celebration. Um, I don't know if I can answer any other questions, but if you have a question, I'm happy to try to.
I don't have a question on the, on the contract itself. It's a change in in the community as far as the festival it goes. And I I just wanna, like, what are we doing? I mean, we have a community of skateboarders and that really love the the skate competition, and I was just what are we doing for engagement to to let them know about the change and stuff like that? Uh, because we'll get emails and Facebook messages and so.
Well, they'll be able to participate in this event. There'll be music down there, and they can skate to the music. There just won't be a competition. I mean, when we host these events and we triumph, we don't guarantee them forever.
I know.
You know, I mean, it's just, it's what's under the city's capacity. Uh, and unfortunately, that wasn't under our capacity this year. So we're kind of replacing it with this. But yeah, we'll reach out. We'll advertise all of these events. We're actually gonna start now that superhero carnival is concluded. We'll start uh doing all of our social media posts on the different events and engaging folks in the social media circles. And and we'll advertise it down at the skate park and let them know that skate skateboarders are welcome to be there Thursday night. It's gonna be a fun time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So um, do we need a motion on this one?
Yes.
I move to approve uh the city enter into a personal and professional services agreement with the skating in the park event with Aaron Wheeler McKenzie doing business as Traveling Wheel, Traveling Wheels Inc. of Sublimity as presented.
Okay.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to city administrator report.
Okay, well. My report somewhere, but I think, I think I can go over it uh pretty well. Uh, we we just completed Saturday our superhero carnival event. I think it was really well attended. Uh, I appreciate everybody who came out to help and volunteer. I think we had a really good engagement at the event. It was busy uh almost the entire time. Um, and we gave away a lot of prizes, so. So I think it was great. We have the capacity to grow that event. Uh, this year, we added a whole bunch of new uh games. And um And, um, so I think we have the capacity to make that event even larger. Uh, than it is and we'll, we'll work on that in years to come. We had less local business involvement this year, typically we have a few local businesses, but it just so happened. Um, those businesses all kind of vacationed at the same time and they just weren't going to be able to execute a booth, so. Uh, but we did still, I think we had as many booths as last year, we, if we would have gotten that local participation, we would have grew again this year. But I think next year will be a great growing opportunity, but it was fun, I don't know how many hundreds of kids. We serve, but, uh, and families, but it was, it was quite a bit, we did, uh, run out of supplies. Um, uh, the vendors that were selling stuff at the, um. Uh, Saturday market, I think a few of them ran out of supplies, uh, ice and drinks and things like that. And so, you know, it was, it was a hit as far as that's concerned. Um, Corn Festival's moving along, the, I, I, the mayor has been working closely with. Uh, the owner of G three, uh, I believe they've secured contracts for entertainment and all the logistics around. Uh, that, so that's moving along great, we're getting ready to start pushing out our advertisement now that superhero is done for. For, uh, that event. Uh, we've actually been having some donations, uh, come in, we've been casting a wide net, they've been a little slower. But they have been materializing, I think we're up to about thirteen thousand dollars in donations paid. Uh, last year, we had fourteen thousand dollars and I think we're probably gonna, we're, we're going to surpass that. So I think we'll, we'll do okay with donations. Um, and it's going to be a great event, the planning commission committees working. Uh, diligently on all of the plans, we've got some entertainment that will be there, there'll be free pony rides for the kids. And, uh, and of course, uh, you know, corn, because it's all about corn. And, um, uh, uh, touching on that, the, uh, Oregon Public Broadcasting. Show is out, I think I sent it to all of you, um, it looked really good, I thought it was fantastic and. We'll push that out on our website and we're going to create some buzz around Corn Festival, we got some. Uh, little giveaways, we're going to do trivia, uh, to start building up to the event. Uh, which is what we did last year, so I think we're going to have a really good, uh, Corn Festival. Um. Something else related to Corn Festival.
If you haven't gotten your T-shirts yet, let me know.
I got my shirt.
So did I.
Uh, and then, uh, oh, here's mine, there we go, there's my notes. Um, so this is our fifty five, fifty fifth anniversary, um, council. I think you all may have been in touch with staff to get a T-shirt, we had a custom made T-shirts. Put together, if not, let us know, we'll get one of those to you. Um, and so the event, the skating event that we just. Did is rolling to Corn Fest, is that right, that's the title?
Yep, yeah.
Yes, and, uh, and then music on main is our title for the street dance. And so we'll be working on those. Um, I did attend the Sublimity POW and Veterans Event, uh, last Saturday, no, Friday. Days are getting confused, last Friday, it was a great event, um. They grow it each year and I think there's a little recognition for our participation.
They sent us a patch and, um, appreciate your work. Um, city bomb zone, I'll pass it around.
I'm, I'm glad I found my notes because there's some important stuff here I have to get to. So, uh, and then, uh, one of the other things, uh, Cascade Family Resource Center. Uh, has asked if we could help make donations for school supplies, they're going to provide backpacks with school supplies. Uh, for families that can't afford to buy school supplies. Um, we actually, as a city in the past, have done this. Uh, and, uh, just because of funding, uh, we had a grant that paid for that. Uh, that grant went away years ago, uh, we discontinued portions of the summer. Uh, reading program and this was part of that. And so we've been building that fund up a little bit, our volunteers have really done a great job of managing that event and executing it. And I think we had sixty two registered kids last Friday, right, it was.
Uh, we're up to seventy or sixty nine, I think.
Yeah, we typically try to limit it to fifty, but we've just had so many people just showing up and the volunteers have been accepting them. So, uh, it is, it is really growing, but they, I, I coordinated with our volunteers who run that program and I said, would you guys? Want to participate in this and, and they said they would. And so, um, we're, uh, we're recommending that we give a donation. Out of Fund Thirty Six, which is the investing in families and children's fund. Uh, of five hundred to a thousand dollars and it would just go to Cascade School District. For the Cascade Family Resource Center to help buy supplies. And honestly, from our perspective, it's, it's great that they are. Putting that program together, it's easier for us to give a little donation than to go buy everything and put together the packets is actually a better way for us to.
I've actually gone down there, I don't know if you guys can go down there and, you know, um, call the school and the district and. I think there's a direct number to, to have a tour of what they do. Uh, I went down there and I spent probably forty five minutes, uh, looking at what they have now, their plans. The supplies they have, we talked about what their goals are, uh, who they're helping within the district and who they're helping. Within the community, um, it's, I, I'm glad that we have this program now.
Yeah, and one of the things we've really been trying to do is continue to build and bridge those partnerships. Um, you know, the school district is so bisected by, uh, Turner, Marion and Umsville. Uh, it's, it's, it's really not integrated, uh, fully into any community and we've been trying to bridge. Uh, some of those gaps and I, I think this is a great way for us to participate and do that, so. We would recommend a thousand dollar donation this year, we can afford that, i- if we participate in future years, we may. Lower or raise that number depending on how the funds look, but right now that's what we'd recommend.
I will say that it was mentioned when Diane talked to her that this gal is brand new in her position and she's a little overwhelmed, so Diane's. Helping her plan.
Yeah.
And she said there is a great need from what she saw in looking at the stuff with the gals.
Yeah, yeah, we, we believe that, so.
Uh, school supplies donations at the, like we do with toys, is that something that we can do on, on top of that?
Well, they're so specific now on the kinds of supplies, we'd have to get a list, they're very specific on the types of supplies and. I'm just kind of leading that to our volunteers to coordinate.
Okay.
So I think the best way we could help them is, is unless they ask for something different, right now, just the funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do know that they're maybe talking about having a date to plan packing the backpacks that we could participate in.
Yeah.
I would be up for that.
That'd be fun.
And this is not a contract, if you just make a motion to make the donation, that's what we'll do.
I move we send a thousand dollar donation to the Cascade Resource Team.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, well, that was the important stuff. Um, so now we'll just talk a little bit about sewer funding, um. Uh, so, uh, as you know, we put in a grant for fifteen million dollars, uh, the legislative. Session, I think, ended Friday, is that correct? Okay, and, uh, we. Yeah, we did, uh, receive a five billion dollar grant, uh, which is great, you know. Uh, I'd love to have gotten the fifteen, but five million will help us immensely and that doubles the amount of grants we have, so.
I think on that note, like, that five million, like, we asked for fifteen, but the max that we were allowed to get is five million.
Yeah, so we got the max.
We got the max, I think, when, when we have members of the community asking us, you know, what about the other ten million, well, we, we got the max.
Yeah.
And I think that's something that we should carry forward.
Yeah. Uh, we did have a call from the governor's office, uh, we can talk about now. It was a little hush hush because of security reasons. Uh, they, you know, they didn't want to like make a big to do about, uh, meeting with us, but we did get a call from them. Uh, last week and they had a short notice meeting schedule, they said, can you be available on this day? Uh, and so we made ourselves available, we did get a, do a sit down one on one with the governor. Um, it, it was actually quite a great little meeting, it was very personable. Um, and, uh, she was genuinely interested in our challenges, we didn't make an ask. Uh, to the governor for anything specific, uh, you know, every community's asking, asking, asking and we just wanted her to know about our. Plight, our challenges and, um, and, and, and let the governor's office look for ways to connect the dots to help. With solutions and I think that was our approach and I think it was a good one. Um.
I think, uh, first, I want to thank Councilor Casares, a few months ago, he had said, hey. There's this link, if you fill this out, we can invite the governor and he did, and then that night I went home and drank a bottle of wine and I invited the governor too.
And I invited the governor.
And then I didn't think, anything of it, so, um, I'm really pleased that three of us invited the governor. Um, I hope that your email was a lot more tactile than mine. Um, and I, regardless of partisanship stance, she is our highest selected official and.
Yeah.
And it's up to us to make those connections and I agree, I feel that we did the right approach, we didn't make an asks, uh, we did ask how we can. As a community help support her better organ, like what could we do? And she said, direct and just truth will direct communication if we're struggling. To reach out and let her know, this is what's going on in Onzone, this is how it affects us, she wants, and she said that would be the best way. So that she knows what's going on. Um, yeah, it was a great meeting, I think, uh, Chief Flowers was there as well, uh, Nico and, uh, council president was there. Yeah.
We, the, we, our delegation did a fantastic job speaking to the governor, uh, and it's clear. You know, we all know what the issues are and we were able to relay that to her. Uh, Kirsty put together just kind of on the fly at the last minute, informational. Booklet about Umsville and some of our challenges and some of our successes and so she, she had a, she had a little something to take with her. Um, now, of course, our, our, our money that was in the legislative capital budget. Was in the works, I think maybe even prior to that meeting. Uh, and I think the governor still has to sign that capital bill, I'm not sure if it was signed yet or not.
That's right, I, I believe she hasn't signed it.
Yeah, um, but I really would find it hard to believe that, that we get excluded from that bill, so I think. We're pretty safe to say we're going to get our five billion dollars. Um, we'll do a public announcement after the bill's signed and we've coordinated with our representatives.
It's still going to be probably until the fall, I mean, it's going to take some, it's going to take some time before we actually see the funds.
Yeah, that's, that's right, yeah, we'll have to go through the contract.
No, but once it's signed, then that's almost as good as in the bank.
It is, right.
And Kirsty, I just want to tell you that she was really impressed by the book and was going to go back and read it more thoroughly. She said it's one of the best things she's received at the, and we're the sixteenth county she visited, but she said it was one of the best presentations she had.
Yeah, I think that's, so what was, what I found. For me that I took away was she honestly said, I really don't know about Omso, I.
Yeah.
She's like, she was honest, she's like, I did my homework on the way here, I didn't know this town was here, like, tell me, what do I need to know? And like, instead of pretending to know, like she said, I don't know, tell me what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, so I thought it was great, uh, you know, there may be some additional. Uh, resources that we leverage from that meeting or, uh, future connections with the governor's office. But now we do have a direct connection and, uh, Reese, re- uh, resource. No, regional solutions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always think resource, regional solutions team, we've interacted with them for many years, they've to some extent been non-staffed. For several months during the transition period of the new governor coming in and now they're back up and running and I think fully staffed and. That's a great coordinating, uh, effort from the governor's office for a lot of the things that are happening. Um, we've always been coordinating since the development of the DEQ enforcement action, we've been coordinating with. Uh, most of the key players, Business Oregon, DEQ, USDA, engineers, consultants in this. Uh, bi-monthly or monthly meeting, depending on the topics and what information was available. And we'll continue to do that now that there's been an update with this five million dollars. Uh, one of the things I want counsel to think about, uh, because we're going to have to have a heart to heart discussion about this. Is how do we proceed forward? And, um, uh, what I think we're going to have to do is I think we're, even though we won't be into construction for a couple of years. Uh, at least on this project, we're going to have to move forward and decide our funding path. In the next thirty days and start initiating that, um, we're really getting a tight window. On meeting, uh, USDA's window will close October first for us to secure our two thousand and ten census data. And as you remember, we worked really hard last year to get our application received. Um, and so it was received, we had to do some additional engineering and so now we actually have to initiate funding. Meaning we have to say, yes, we're going to take this number of dollars from you, uh, before next October first. And that should be a fairly short process because we've done, uh, the entire NEPA process. Uh, we've done all the environmental review, basically that's that process, all the engineering. All the preliminary engineering, all of the applications have been filled out. Um, so we're going to have, we're going to come to council probably at the next meeting. We're going to probably spend a lot, a good portion of our meeting just talking about these scenarios and getting direction, but. I, we can still work on grants even though we pull the trigger on the funding, uh, because we're not actually taking that money. Uh, we'll still work on grants and there are several million dollars of the grant opportunities. In the funding mechanism because of that two thousand and ten census. And so one of my fears is I don't want to wait and, and, and lose that advantage because. If we lose that advantage, we may just give up, we may end up giving up some grant dollars through the funding mechanism. And I don't want to do that, there's also some increased opportunities with grants through, uh, DEQ. And, uh, this is going to be a very complicated funding, uh, project. And because we've gotten several grants from different agencies that we'll have to administer. And it, we're probably going to be funded from three different state agencies, from DEQ twice. Once through a construction dollars and if we want to maximize lever, uh, maximize. The amount of grants we can leverage, we're probably going to initiate a phase of the sewer project through them. Because we can get two million dollars of loan forgiveness through DEQ and I don't want to just. Ignore two million dollars.
No.
Uh.
None of us do.
And, and it may cost us, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to administer, we may have to bring on some help, but. Forty thousand dollars in administrative costs for two million dollars, pretty good trade in. Uh, and then we're going to initiate some funding from D, uh, from USDA. Uh, USDA, um, is looking at a five million dollar grant. Now that's not guaranteed, we have to apply, we have to go through that process and see what we're awarded. But they also said that they're willing to do a special request at the federal level to try to increase that. And so, you know, we could still, we could still be fifty, sixty, seventy percent grant funded at the end of the day with this project, we're going to keep working on it. But we could be as low as forty or fifty percent and then the rest of that will be rate driven. Uh, you know, it'll be in our, in our bills. Um, we're going to come forward, there's a little worksheet we did at the one stop for those of you who participated. We're trying to access that, um, but we're going to create some sort of little scenario spreadsheet if we don't get that. And, uh, and just to let you know what that bill might look like, I could take a hypothetical guess right now, but I. I, I hate to do that, but it's, it's not three hundred dollars, it's, it's, it's something much lower than that. Um, so.
By clearly, we just got.
Yeah, so we'll have to wait and see where we get on that, but, uh, that's all moving along and I think, um, I think. You know, it's doing, it's, we're, we're doing as well as we could, you know, it's a, it's a big project and I think we're doing really well, I think. We're, we're up to ten million dollars in grant funds for that project by itself, um, you know. Lot of communities work really hard and don't get anything that looks like that, so we've done a good job and. I just want to say that I think we've done a good job of bringing our community along, uh, as partners with this project. Doesn't mean they're going to be happy at the end of. Doesn't mean they're gonna be happy at the end of the day because the bill will go up no matter what. And nobody wants a raise in their utility bill. I don't want to do it either. So they're not gonna be happy, but they're, they're not in the dark about it. They, they understand we're working hard. Uh, they understand that we're trying to leverage, uh, everything that we can leverage to, to make this happen and that we really don't have a choice. So what are your options? So let's say, for instance, we decide to slow walk the project and we try to push it out several years. We could certainly do that. And I think we, you know, I don't, I don't think DEQ would even, uh, you know, argue against that. But the project's gonna escalate in cost. And so any money that we would realize. Slow walking this project is just wasted effort that we're, i- if we, if we were lucky enough to get additional money. We're gonna just end up turning that over in in- increased cost for construction. And then we are not gonna be able to secure the extra grant funding through the census data. We're just trading one dollar for, for the next. And I honestly just don't know what the benefit to the community would be to push it out further.
I don't think there's any benefit. I don't think there is either.
It increased the costs.
All the conversations we've had and legislatures and everyone. With inflation rising and like, you think about inflation having the effects the last two years. Right? What is it gonna be five years from now? It's like our public works building. Yeah, that's the same problem.
Yeah, that's right.
We don't want more of that.
We don't want more of that. And, and with our census and because we're under an enforcement action. Uh, we really qualify for the maximum amount of not only grants, but we subsidize interest rates. Uh, and so I think, I think the, the worst case scenario was like three point.
Three point two five?
Three point two five or something like that. That was the worst case scenario. DEQ is like one point nine two. And when everybody's out paying, you know, six, seven percent mortgages, having that subsidized interest rate on fifteen, twenty million dollars. Over a thirty-year period really lowers our, our payment, uh, there. So I think we've really positioned ourselves really well. I would like us to be, you know, a little more in grants right now. But where we are really, I think, is the, one of the better case scenarios that we could have hoped for. Um, I would love the, the government that, you know, seemed to have a lot of money flowing around just to give us the thirty million dollars. But, um, it just wasn't that easy to get. We, we got a lot. I, I mean, if you look. Uh, if you add this to our coffers in the last three years, I think we've gotten somewhere around fourteen, fifteen million dollars in grants for. Various projects. That's a lot of money for a little community. And so I think we did pretty well.
One year's budget by itself usually.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So, um, other than that, I can't think of anything urgent, uh, to talk to council about, um. Do you have any questions or you have any thing you want to know? Please ask.
So how do you select the delegation that like?
Yeah. Well, in this particular case, it was the three people that invited her, uh, because she responded saying. The people, the people that invited me are the people I'd like to meet with. And, and then, um, she said we could invite. Uh. Uh, two other people, uh, and we felt our council president was good to be there. And then our chief, police chief, and just because she actually had a lot of public safety questions. Um, and so I actually could have, like, I, they, like, these guys know because they were on the email chain. But I was trying to get additional people because I would have liked to bring in some other folks that could have, uh, benefited from that. Meeting, but yeah, it was, it was specific to the, the response was to the people that, and then our council president. And they wanted to keep it really confined. They wanted to have a real one-on-one conversation. But I did, she did kind of allude that she might come back and participate in Corn Festival.
Yeah. She put it on her notes, but we'll see.
So we make it.
That the person who would really want it would be her spouse.
Yeah.
Several times.
I just, uh, wanted to kind of just thank, you know, uh, staff and just thank, you know, mayor and counselors and just everybody and our citizens for kind of just working to. Try to help make this happen as far as getting every dollar we can squeeze. Um, I really want this. I don't want us to be a squeaky wheel necessarily, but I want just, you know, kind of the process we went through was going for our elected officials and trying to get money. I'm kind of hoping we can keep that the norm. Um, I know a lot of the feedback that I got from even people that. Don't even represent us that were kind of the heads of these committees that they actually appreciated, you know, small-town mayors and counselors and, you know. Uh, staff going out and speaking to them and said they're being hired guns and paid lobbyists to come and do that work. And I think just, you know, the more we grow and the more, um, citizens that we, um, you know, absorb to our community, just I think making those connections. Regardless of, they have a D or an R next to their name is just so important. I think we just make that a part of our culture going forward. I think that'd be huge for us. And would definitely help us out with other grants in the future.
Yeah, I think our interactions in the Capitol this year, uh, I think, uh, the mayor and other elected spent. Quite a little bit of time talking, uh, with representatives at the state level. And I think that kept our project at the top of the list. And I did get a lot of interaction with the, uh, legislative staff. Asking follow-up questions. They were asking great questions. Well, and you could tell the questions where they were looking for. Where they could place this justification of funding. So I think, you know, I, I felt optimistic. Uh, less so during, you know, the whole political environment, you know, that kind of ensued. I was like, uh. I, I felt real optimistic about the total funding and that kind of happened. I'm like, well, I, I don't know how that'll play into it. But it sounds like they decided that the funds were limited and so they were gonna cap. Uh, capital request at a certain amount. I, I went through the bills. I didn't really see. There may be some in there because the, you know, the text of those bills are, are huge. Uh, I, I really saw the larger funding award seem to go towards state services and programs, not necessarily. Cities seem to have gotten five, five million or less. So I think we did, I think we did really well. Yeah.
I will tell you one thing that the mayor and I heard several times is, uh, the timing of getting our request in the first day. Made a huge difference in our priority.
And having our presentation, we had, yeah, having the capital funding request with us in hand, going in together, follow-up emails. The thank you cards, um, all those went into making sure that Umsville was always in the back of their mind.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It.
We, we had several people say, we will make sure you are on there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when we met with them on the Ways and Means Committee and, and the Capitol Construction.
And I think that cut across party lines.
Yes, it did.
Definitely.
And then, um, and then the engagement that we did as a community, like even in the breakfast meeting. Um, the governor was like, oh my gosh, you guys went door to door. I was like, yeah, I was like, I'm going out there. Who's coming with me? I think that helped because when, when we went door to door, the, the conversations I was having were, it's not just us that can go. You could, you can submit a written testimony. You can write the legislature. You can be a part of this process. It just doesn't have to be us. It's more impactful coming from everybody else.
Yeah, and I think we did. I, I think, uh, I'm not, I know we had folks that submitted written testimony. I don't know if they did verbal testimony. But I think our exchange club reps did that. I think some other members of.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
I heard that testimony. That was awesome.
Yeah.
Even just having the signatures was shocking to them.
Yeah.
That we went to that effort.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Fifteen million, that was our number, not their.
Right. Yeah, but they capped all requests at five million. So that's the most anybody can get.
It was, well, why didn't you get the fifteen million?
Right.
That's, yeah, we just arbitrarily said, could we have fifteen million?
And they said, no, but you can have five.
But just the fact that we got five million because some of the conversations we had and what we were seeing at the testimony, it was like. Will we even be lucky enough to get five hundred thousand or a million and to still get five million is amazing to me.
No, it's, it's a good number and that's not the end of our effort. Uh, if we go through and we do. Uh, pull the trigger on funding, we've got a period of time to use that. I think it's five years. And so during that time, we can still apply for grants. Uh, we still have some federal grant applications out there. And, you know, as new stuff like the, the two million dollar, uh, loan forgiveness, that was just announced last week. So there's still things that are popping up. And, uh, you know, we'll continue to take advantage of those because it's really about affordable housing. And, and that's what, you know, the mayor has said very well in her testimony. And we, we keep hitting that tone that, you know, it doesn't matter how much you paid for your house. If you can't afford. To live in it, it's not affordable, right? And, and, you know, three hundred dollar utility bills, nobody's interested in living in a place where that's the norm. Uh, uh, right, that, that doesn't sound pleasant to anybody. So we keep, we keep hitting that. Um, and even USDA has a threshold where they think affordability. Uh, and, and they have those numbers for funding where they think, okay, now people can't afford to pay your bill. And they even have those numbers in that threshold. So, uh, even if the full project was funded, we know it's about fifty dollars. An additional O and M, uh, on the sewer side. Uh, that almost doubles the sewer bill right there, just that fifty dollars. So. It's, it's vital that we continue to try to tick away at some of this capital, but, um, all in all, I think we've got that. We've got that bill in a, I think it'll be in a manageable, unpleasant, but manageable range. And let's see if we can get it closer to the less pleasant, or, or maybe I said that wrong. Less unpleasant area, era, era, if we can. So we'll keep working on that.
Moving on to mayor and counselor reports, uh, we'd already talked about the stuff that I was, um. Uh, the veteran award and the governor coming. Um, I was at the Saturday market. And superhero carnival. Thank you for those of you that were out there. Um, as summer's going. I usually try to go down to Saturday market. Um, a few times, I want to encourage you guys to contact the city. Show up for a few hours. The town loves to see us down there. I even go, even though like my children are getting, you know. The last ones on her way out, I still show up to the movies in the park because they like to see us out there. Um. Oh, you guys, I always want to encourage you guys, especially with the Saturday market, um, just drop in for a couple hours on a Saturday and then. Let them know that we support them. Um, does anyone else have anything?
I'll be attending the first SCATS MPO meeting tomorrow at noon. Find out about our getting included in that and they're gonna be starting the discussion on it. So I can participate in it, but I don't get any votes or anything until we're added to it. Um, and it probably won't be until, from what I understand, closer to the end of the year when that. Agreement is done and we're officially added in and have a vote. So, but in the meantime, I've been allowed to participate. With the amount I can. So let you know how that goes.
And one more thing, as, um, as state, as my workload intensifies over the next couple of weeks. Um, if you get an email of one o'clock in the morning, I'm sorry, guys. That's, that's just how my life is right now.
And Doug, you are allowed to be an alternative to that committee. So I'll keep in touch with you on what's going on.
Right, um, anything for good of the order? I mean, um, the only correspondence we had was that letter that came through with the award and the badge. Um, and there is no executive session, so we can go ahead and in tonight's meeting at seven twenty-six P M.
About eight twenty-six.
Oh, eight twenty-six P M.